I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honored today to have a pre-recorded video of students from New Brighton School singing "O Canada." I would ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students. The Calgary Board of Education acknowledges the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty Seven nations, including the Sig-Sig-Kaitzitzapi, comprised of the Sigsiga, the Guayna, the Begani, and the Emskapi-Begani nations. We acknowledge the Tena Nation, the Aarhe Nakota, comprised of the Taniki, Berespa, and Good Stony nations, the Meiti Nation within Alberta, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty Seven region of southern Alberta. This land on which we gather is traditionally known as Moginsitis, Gussise, Winchispa, Otusconee. As a learning organization, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action focused on education for reconciliation action. Oki, Dara Nastara, Ambawa Stich, Tonsay, Tani She. Bonjour, hello, and welcome to all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting. Representing our stakeholder groups, I would like to recognize Clay Gordon from the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local Forty, from the Elementary School Principals Association and the Principals Association for Adolescent Learners, Jennifer Bedekey, and from the Senior High School Principals Association, Christos Sagriotis. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be made?
Madam Chair, the following agenda change request has been received. That item 9.2.1, the Chief Superintendent's Update Report, be removed from the consent agenda and added as item 7.1 under Matters Reserved for Board Information.
Could I have a motion the agenda be approved with the proposed changes? Thank you, Trustee Bukedinovich. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Our next business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is the annual monitoring of Results II academic success. Today's presentation and questions will focus on indicators one, two, and three with the balance of the report being presented at the January 25th, 2025 public board meeting. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you. Chair Bolger and trustees, before you today is the monitoring report for Results II academic success. This report provides assurance that CBE continues to make reasonable progress towards ensuring that each student will be literate and numerate and able to integrate and apply the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and competencies acquired across all academic disciplines. This assurance is provided through the five board-approved indicators and includes evidence based on report card data, provincial assessments, and Alberta education assurance measures. The evidence continues to show that we can be proud of CBE students and their successes, as well as the work being done in schools and service units across the organization. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge the overlap between the data sets in the Results II report and those included in the Alberta Education Results Report, or the AERR that was shared with the board in November. A reminder that the AERR aims to provide assurance on progress towards the goals outlined in the CBE education plan, encompassing a wide range of provincial and local measures. The Results II monitoring report provides you with more detailed analysis of the data and specifically focuses on the academic success of CBE learners to assess reasonable progress over time. This deeper analysis allows us to examine results over time and for individual student cohorts. A reminder as well that while both provincial assessments and report card data are valuable for triangulating information, they do measure different aspects of achievement. Our report card data typically reflects a broad summary of achievement across the entirety of a curricular subject area, whereas the provincial assessments evaluate achievement at a very specific point in time, focusing on particular aspects of that curriculum. Over the next two board meetings, we'll highlight that there is much to celebrate and also recognize where we have continued areas for growth and improvement. Overall, we are pleased with achievement in key areas and the rate of progress within each of our schools. While we consider progress and growth for a learner over time, we should also consider the context of these results. Enrollment pressures, increased number of students joining our system within the school year, the lingering effects of the pandemic, and increasing student complexity. With these considerations in mind, maintaining and even increasing result levels is even more noteworthy. These results reflect not only improvement in academic performance, but also reflect the resilience and hard work of our students and staff in challenging times. One area of celebration I wish to highlight is our three-, four-, and five-year high school completion rates in this context specifically. As we previously shared in the annual education results report, CBE's five-year completion rate has shown an improvement over the previous average, closing the gap between CBE and provincial results. Compared to the previous year's results, we do see a decline in the three- and four-year completion rates, a pattern that mirrors the province. And as we look towards the future, with growing enrollment and increased student complexity, especially the number of English as an additional language learners we have seen over the past three years, we expect that some students will need additional time to complete high school. This report shows the work our schools are already doing and our approaches toward providing time and resources to support our students in achieving high school completion through a broad range of pathways into the future. Superintendents Nelson and Turner will provide more detail on this report and highlights areas to celebrate, where progress is being made, and continued areas of focus, as well as the impacts of current context and the realities. I will then close with a brief summary.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman, Chair Bolger, and trustees. It is important to consider results in comparison to the provincial overall results and in comparison to our CBE year-over-year results. And as Chief Pittman shared, it is also important to consider the context and current realities. I'm going to start by speaking more to high school completion. As Chief Pittman shared, we are pleased that the CBE's five-year completion rate has shown improvement over the previous three-year average and that we are closing the gap between the CBE and provincial results. And while we did see a decline in the three-year and four-year completion rates, when we look at specific cohort groups, five out of the 12 CPE cohorts, we saw increases or maintained their completion rates. These cohorts would be the three-, four-, and five-year cohort groups for each of the ALL students, EAL students, students who self-identify as indigenous, and students with identified special education needs. These results suggest that we are continuing to see progress in particular areas. And as we take into consideration the context of these results, it's important to recognize that these cohorts were determined during the pandemic, a period characterized by learning disruptions and restrictions in education. Given these challenges, it's important, excuse me, it is not surprising that students may need more than three years to complete their high school education. When we look at our 30-level diploma exam results, we can celebrate the fact that all cohorts achieved acceptable or excellent-level results that surpassed the provincial average in 43 out of 44 cases. And when comparing the 2022-2023 CBE results to this past year's performance, we see several positive trends. Seventy-six percent of the cohorts showed an increase in both acceptable and excellent results, and 4% of the cohorts maintained their results. Looking at provincial achievement test results, or PATs, I want to begin by sharing that as an organization and in close partnership with the Alberta Education, CBE successfully supported the administration of all the PATs on the Alberta Education's new digital platform in the 2023-2024 school year. This was an important initiative for our division to support and provide feedback early on, with the digital exams becoming mandatory next school year. That said, not all school divisions across Alberta opted to take part in the use of the digital exam platform, or for those that did, not necessarily all schools in this division took part. Given that this change in exam administration was not necessarily consistent across the province, we do suggest caution when comparing results, both to the province and CBE year-over-year results. With that in mind, we can share that for the 2023-2024 PATs, CBE students performed better than the provincial average in 54% of cases across all cohorts at the acceptable standard. In 44% of the cases, CBE performance was lower than the provincial results. One of the more notable areas was in KNE courses, where 27% of results at the acceptable standard were below the province. It is worth noting that PAT results include all enrolled students, including those who were excused or absent for the exam. When students do not attend, their results are counted as zero, which can impact overall scores. This is a particular challenge in the KNE cohort where attendance for exams remains an area for improvement. As such, this is an area of focus moving forward, not only as an opportunity to see improvement in results, but also provide a more accurate picture of how our students are achieving. At this point, I would like to turn to my partner in school improvement, Superintendent Turner, to share more details regarding report card results.
Thank you. Chair Bolger, trustees, as Chief Pittman shared, the provincial assessment data and report card data can provide triangulation and highlight areas of overall improvement, but they do not measure specific aspects, but they do measure specific aspects of student learning. And looking at report card data, note that while the mean average is inclusive of all indicators, one, two, three, and four, teachers also use other indicators of detailed assessment of learning. And these examples include the use of EAL. That's when the acquisition of English as an additional language may be impacting learning in a particular area. There is also IPP, where progress towards goals related to an individual STEM is reported on or through a student's individual program plan. And ADP, this is where a student is working towards an earlier grade level outcome for that curriculum, adapting instruction to meet the learner where they're at in order to support their continued progress going forward. The use of these indicators is not captured as part of the mean presented. At times, progress for a learner moving between one of the indicators above and the use of a numerical indicator may impact the mean. I'll provide two examples of that. A student who is working on outcomes below grade level and receiving an ADP may show significant growth and now may be working at an early grade level achievement resulting in a one as a numerical indicator. Although that one is a low indicator, it doesn't necessarily reflect the significant growth that occurred as a result of the work that was done while they were being recorded in the ADP category. A second example, a student previously receiving a one or a two may be identified as a student with exceptional learning needs, and as a result, move away from the numerical indicator and have their stems reported on in their individual education plan or individual program plan, IPP. Both situations would impact the report mean resulting. So while the mean provides us an important insight into areas of celebration and opportunity for growth, again, it is important in this area to exercise caution when considering the results overall. With that in mind, we did observe a general decline from last year's results for Division one, two, and three across all subject areas. We note increases in some areas, including Division one, where we saw improvements for French language arts, and Division three, fine and performing arts. Other subjects such as Division three physical education, Division three social studies, and Division one mathematics, report card results remain stable over this time. When considering the goal of education is for students to experience a year's worth of learning per year, stability in our results indicates that students are continuing to experience this type of progress during these complex times. When ongoing implementation of new curriculum in Division one and two, certain decreases in results might be understandable, as both teacher and students are working towards new outcomes and expectations. However, the general decline observed in Division two and three for our middle-years learners highlights an important area for our focus, one that we have identified early in the 2023-2024 year and have already begun putting support structures in place. Specifically, we have identified in the 2024-2027 education plan a student well-being action to support students academically and socio-emotionally through targeted programming structures and processes in particular to focus on our middle-years learners. Two specific actions being taken include middle-years literacy sessions. These sessions emphasize reading instruction, interventions, and high-quality assessment. And Social-Emotional Middle School Working Group is developing resources tailored to the middle-school learner for our staff and our families. An area of celebration is our high school learners. In reviewing the report card results for Division four, there's an overall increase across core subjects. One exception was a slight and statistically insignificant decrease in social studies results for our indigenous students. As we look specifically to the indigenous student cohort, we note that last year, the decision was made to remove the exception on this report for students who self-identify as indigenous. At that time, it was noted that while progress was not consistent across grade levels, there is improvement overall and progress, and this is again evident in the results for this year. While the CBE saw a decline in PAT results at the acceptable standard compared to the provincial averages for indigenous students, there continue to be encouraging signs when we look to CBE results compared to the previous year. In six out of 11 exams, the CBE results for indigenous students were higher and showing areas of growth. This mix of progress highlights areas where we continue to focus our efforts. For each cohort, all CBE students, we acknowledge that there is still work to be done. This data, along with ongoing collection of local incremental data, continues to guide our planning, our work, and our efforts. We remain committed to addressing the learning needs of all of our students and staff, continually adjusting resources to provide targeted supports directly to our students.
Thank you, Superintendents Turner and Nelson. In summary, while we saw some challenges, especially in high school completion rates and the impact of the pandemic, there were many positive results, particularly in diploma exam performance and some areas of report card results. Our continued focus will be on supporting students in cohorts where results were lower, particularly for indigenous students, our middle-school learners as an entire cohort, and in areas such as our Knowledge and Employability or KNE courses. We'll also continue working to maintain and build on improvements in other areas that we'll discuss at our next meeting in French language arts and fine and performing arts. And we thank you for your attention to our extensive comments today, but given the gravity of this report and the importance of it, wanted to ensure that we provided some commentary to assist the board regarding administration's position. And we welcome your questions related to indicators one, two, and three for our Results II academic success.
Thank you. Trustees have received and reviewed the Chief Superintendent's report regarding the annual monitoring of Results II academic success for the 2023-2024 school year. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organizational progress in this results area. I now invite any trustee who has questions on indicators one, two, and/or three of the annual monitoring report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. I encourage you to limit your questions to whether reasonable progress has been made to the ultimate achievement of this results policy. I remind trustees that the emphasis for monitoring results is not on compliance, but rather on reasonable progress. Trustee Close.
Thank you, Chair Bolger. I do have to start sort of with a larger screen of thinking, and we'll see if I can be clear, and I really appreciate the opening remarks. And I also appreciate the report and the impact of the analysis that it has within each of our schools, because I see that through school development plans on websites, et cetera. But what I'm kind of musing about right now is how high school completion, like how do we define success within that indicator? And if I'm correct, I think our three-year completion rate has typically been lower than the province. And for the first time, we're actually seeing that gap decrease, but I'm not sure that's a good story in the sense of the rest of the province is catching up with some complexity within our learning population and obviously saw the impacts of COVID. I would admit, from your opening remarks, that it is a good news story in the sense of we've maintained, like despite all, we've done well. But where I'm struggling, and I think I need some advice or some expertise, is I understand the focus on absenteeism. I understand that direct connection with increasing high school graduation rates. And I think we're doing a really good job when we look at the four and five year, and I want to celebrate that, because I think for some students, it does take longer, because there is a whole myriad of reasons of why there's a delay in graduating. But the good news is that they're actually graduating eventually. But when I look at the three-year rate, I think I need more information of what do I compare that to? Why am I, should I be okay that it's low, lower than the four and five, like that it takes students more time? I'm not being clear, I'm sorry, but I think you understand my question, hopefully. Let's see where it goes.
Well, let's all go on this journey, Trustee Close, through the chair. I'll start and then invite Superintendent Nelson to continue. The broader elements linked to three, four, and five, our end goal is high school completion, and not simply high school completion, but positioning students to be able to be successful in whichever routes they choose post-graduation. In that context, there are realities related to students choosing and new pathways over the last, even if you think the last five years. The number of different choices that our students have access to, to link directly into workforce or apprenticeship or post-secondary training through dual credit or our unique pathways programs, have significantly expanded in alignment with Alberta education priorities. And in that context, there is choice that may require more time. There is also the reality, though, of the pressures that students have experienced and the need to either take an increased number of courses to be able to access the courses they wish to for post-secondary acceptance, and that's an important element as well. So when you look at a student who perhaps recognizes they wish to pursue a career that requires completion of Math 30-1, but they need to expand their skills prior to being able to take that particular route, then they would take additional courses to prepare them for that requiring additional time for those components, and that has impacts on other parts of schedules. Additionally, and then I'll let Superintendent Nelson speak about attendance, those components around maintaining that track of completion of courses alongside quarters and semesters in a high school is a very concentrated period of time, and one where any disruption, whether that be a significant illness, injury, or other family events, that can disrupt the ability to complete some really important courses. These are realities, and the importance, is three years still a valid measure? It remains our goal, that students can complete. However, within that, we also wish to ensure that three, four, and five are all equally important to monitor. And when we look at our partnerships with our post-secundaries and when we look at our entry into the workforce, those metrics also reflect success that are not necessarily demonstrated here.
Thank you, Chief Pittman, and through the chair. First of all, Trustee Close, I think you asked us a very important question. So if we look at the last three or four years, our three-year graduation rate hovers around 80%. And we know, and we've shared within the boardroom, that there is a changing complexity or demographic to the CBE, and that was also echoed in our report to the AER. And so as we see an increasing EAL population, we know that depending when a student arrives into our great public system, that they may need more time. And I think this would also apply to students that may have special education needs, and that could range from learning disabilities to mental health. And so I think therefore it is important for us and you as the board that we critically analyze a three-, four-, and five-year graduation rate. So if we see the three-year drop, then the next year, are we looking to see the four-year increase? And then how do we also look at that group of students as a cohort? Specifically in regards to attendance, and I think you mentioned a bit, we are focused on aspects of attendance, but that is also a community approach, et cetera. And I think that focus will support students to graduation. We know there's correlation between attending school and graduating, but as Chief Pittman has highlighted, and I think, I hope that I've added, there are many factors in this journey to high school, and in this case, I'm going to use the word completion, because I think we also have to remember that as a system that takes all students, that there are multiple ways to high school completion, and they include what most of us quite often refer to, graduation and diploma, but there is also a certificate of high school achievement and a certificate of school completion, and that will be really important in our work as we continue to move forward. So I hope that helps.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you, Chair. Also want to just express gratitude for the report, also for the opening remarks that provided some really important information. So thank you so much, and appreciate my colleague's question as well and the additional information that was provided there. The data itself tells a story, and so most of my questions today are really around context, you know, as we consider ultimately, you know, whether or not the board supports, you know, that the CBE is making reasonable progress. I think the context is really important in taking a look at that. And so I'm going to start with, I guess there's information provided on page 93 of 135, English as an Additional Language Learner, EAL benchmarks, and also earlier in the report, it is also mentioned around the language proficiency level of students. And we've heard, you know, previously that we are receiving students that maybe are coming to us with a lower language proficiency than maybe we've seen in previous years. And so I think that tells a story about, you know, this monitoring year that we're taking a look at. The information on page 93 of 135 says that language proficiency levels for our EAL learners, the data includes indicators in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And so I'm just curious, I guess, about... We receive a student who is age-appropriate for, say, grade eight, right? But then maybe they're, you know, where would we hope to see their, you know, their language proficiency level, you know, where might we be receiving them? And, you know, what does sort of one, two, and three mean, right? And, you know, how are we then supporting them to, you know, progress through those proficiency levels so that they can be successful academically?
So maybe I'll start with just a brief explanation around the proficiency level, and then the second part, you know, how do we support? And then I also hear a piece in this, does this look different for different students? Does this make sense? And sorry, through the chair. So in regarding students at the CBE, we use the CBE K-12 ESL proficiency benchmark. So just quick explanations, when we talk about benchmarks, we have four strands, and they are reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And then within the strands, there are three competencies. So you have vocabulary, syntax, discourse within each strand. And then those competencies and strands, we have indicators, and they're kind of grouped by our divisions. And then those competencies and strands, we have indicators and they're kind of grouped by our divisions. So you kind of have grade one to three, four to six, so div one, div two, all the way up to your high school, which would be division four. And then within that, the teacher or staff, if they came through the welcome center, would be assessed at an LP one, so that'd be beginning to an LP five. And so in div one, it may be on the actual speaking that and listening that the student can with prompts have a simple understanding of what's expected of them in class. Whereas at the extending or the LP five, if you were in elementary, they would be able to take and understand complex, sorry, complex example of the teacher and then be able to go off and do that lesson and be able to use all the same vocabulary as the other students or of a student that was born in Canada and English as their first language. So in regards to the second part of your question, as how do we support? And I think there'll be other questions around EAL. We have a spectrum of support. So the student that say shows up and they're middle school and they're a refugee student and they have LP one, LP two, and they have minimal education experience or infrastructure sometimes I say, those students may end up in a lead class where it's more of a sheltered. They would participate, let's say 20% of the time with all student population, but then have targeted support with the idea that in two years that they'd be able to enter into kind of the full mainstream. We have other students that may arrive and they are already LP three, four, and they come in grade nine and 10 and they'll probably be able to progress or maybe they need an extra semester. It really is determined on that student, what schooling they've had and what their English level is. And then we have specific targeted support, especially through EAL team and specifically for schools that have higher EAL population. And I think this is an area that the CBE has been a leader in the province for actually decades through my whole journey with the CBE.
Trustee Hack.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to state that the overall look of this results report looks very different from this time last year. I want to note that from my perspective, it shows a very concise focus on the indicators. I personally appreciate the look of it as it makes it much easier for digestion as well as making it easier to be able to share this communication with my communities. I did notice a change that I'm looking for a little bit of clarity on. I'm wondering why the administration's option, so those boxes, to state making reasonable progress with exceptions was removed from the report cover page. Is administration no longer identifying areas of exception? Just wondering a little bit about that, thanks.
Through the chair, an important question and was touched briefly on Superintendent Turner's opening remarks. But with respect to a comparison of the data, while there are some inconsistencies in the context and reasonable progress and in the absence of set targets, continuing to name exceptions, we had confidence that within the education plan, the identified actions and monitoring alongside board-approved indicators, that we would continue to maintain our focus, that the exception did not shift that focus and prioritization. But that given the board's decision last year to remove the exception, the continued reflection of similar progress and in the context of increased enrollment, increased transitions, increase in EAL population, that reasonable progress in that context is made despite acknowledging, and we've stated it, I think quite clearly regarding areas where we do have inconsistent data and continued need for focus. The question and discussion around where administration or where the board determines an exception is a continued important conversation for us to have as we relate this back to the realities and disruption of analysis in the pandemic, the continued shifts of priorities in terms of our student enrollment pressures and then how we continue to manage new and evolving curriculum, which is a significant impact as well. So in that context, made the determination to withhold naming the exception does not change our actions. And I think is an important conversation for the board at administration to continue to have as we work on our results policies.
Follow-up?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out if that box is going to be removed from R3, R4? Like just because that box of exception was always an option on that cover page for administration?
Is the box not, so admin-
That's why, that's why.
That is an error in that there, it should have been blank in that we were not indicating an exception. So it is not an intent to remove. I apologize, I missed that because it was an intentional decision to not select the box. So the report before you has the chief superintendent certification, the report that I have has us making reasonable progress toward achieving the desired results. Yeah.
Trustee Vukadinovich.
Thank you. Looking at page 18 of 135, I see that absenteeism is a focus as an area to build capacity. So I was wondering what impact does a high level of absenteeism have on achievements? I don't mean like occasionally missing a class, but like the more significant type of absenteeism. What factors impact student absenteeism? And again, here I'm not talking about kids who miss an occasional day or half day here and there for appointments or colds or broken bones. But I mean like the more, the more difficult to address absenteeism, the higher level absenteeism. So what factors impact that type of student absenteeism? And how can we tackle this problem?
Through the chair. So I hear three questions there. So in regards to the impact of a student being absent in achievement. So key findings from the research show that chronic absenteeism, and I think that's what you're referring to, as early as division one and division two can negatively impact reading and mathematic achievement. And then that would have long-term impacts on graduation rates. Students who are chronically absent are at a higher risk of diminished overall academic performance. And students who attend regularly are significantly more likely to graduate high school. Chronic absenteeism puts students at a higher risk of falling behind, dropping out. And we do quite often see this particularly in low-income students, students with disabilities and potentially English language learners or EAL learners. And sometimes students who self-identify as Indigenous students. So what factors impact this? So we understand and the research suggests that personal issues for students are a factor and chronic absenteeism, including illness, mental health concerns and learning challenges. And there may also be negative peer influences in the community that interfere with school attendance. And there is also a myriad of factors at the family level that may impact attendance, such as parenting capacity, parental mental health, domestic violence and financial difficulties. And there may be additional challenges such as trauma or lack of support or relationships at the school level that impact attendance rates. And of course, we always try to increase the support levels at the school. So how do we tackle this problem? So at the CB, we try to take on a whole school approach. So this is implemented across the CB schools and allows leaders to use their school data to provide early support for attendance concerns. And through this approach, our schools offer tiered supports for students and families to address the multifaceted factors of chronic absenteeism and follow a robust attendance process, ensure these supports are effective. So when we have students that may be chronically absent, the school staff reach out to the family through various methods of communication, inviting them to connect with the school. They may work with, on an attendance improvement plan. They may provide other resources which could be human capital resources. So school-family liaison. And then we at times try to decrease some of those barriers with other partners and agencies. I would say that when we see significant chronic absenteeism, as you said, not the student that misses one or two days a month and that student is missing, you know, 30, 40, 50% of the year, it quite often is a whole family, a whole school and probably will also need to use other practitioner and services within the community to support. That would be my practical experience as a principal and the experiences that I'm getting from the principals and our board.
Marilyn Dennis.
Thank you Chair. Maybe just to, I guess, build a little bit on the question of trustee Vukadinovich. In the report, it was also referenced ongoing high absenteeism for staff as well. And so just again, a little bit of context around that. I guess, do we, you know, have we identified trends? And certainly through sort of the COVID years, you know, we had, you know, high absenteeism for students and staff, which is, you know, fair and expected. But again, just around, you know, as we hopefully are, I have another question about COVID later, but just hopefully as we're sort of moving past some of the deeper impacts of the pandemic, I'm just wondering if there are any trends that we've been able to identify? As we were looking at, you know, progress from last year, any trends that we could identify related to staff absenteeism and just some challenges that we might be experiencing and filling positions?
Thank you, through the chair. And so we have seen small decreases in staff absences and unfilled vacancies in comparison to the previous year. And this is attributed to really hard work by our human resource department as well as school staff in looking at ways in which to address these unfilled vacancies. There continues however, to be small periods of time throughout the year where there's large absences or unfilled vacancies. And this is particularly through the months of February through May. And there's a number of factors that may contribute to additional pressures on schools during this period of time, including increased complexity and ongoing enrollment as demand over the course of the year incur, continues. An additional factor is that there are a number of different in-year funding additions that are received by the Ministry of Education and Alberta Education. We are appreciative of those funds, however, that does create additional pressures. Examples include the complexity in enrollment, growth funding, learning interventions funding and Alberta Education digital exam implementation funding. And while these funds are greatly appreciated and necessary, at the same time, it applies pressure for funds in staffing roles for schools to be able to have fine substitutes, to be able to engage in that work. And so as well as these added pressures, schools are working in order to overcome those things. There are some trends that we can speak to about in addition to these other areas that contribute to these high vacancies. And that staff illness is consistently through the winter months as high flu and cold periods of time occur that drives up our absenteeism rates. We continue to hire off of our rosters. And so wonderful to bring those teachers into the system. However, that creates a smaller pool of individuals as they move into our temporary contracts. And we continue to support employee well-being. This is an important part of employee well-being is to continue to foster those rosters. So the Human Resource Service Unit is constantly trying to hire, to add individuals to our teaching and our support staff rosters to make sure that as we are hiring temporary staff, that those positions are filled. And so those are some of the trends that we're seeing in terms of high absenteeism. I hope that is, answers your question, thank you.
Trustee Vukadinovich.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to talking about students with chronic absenteeism challenges. So I'm wondering, could you tell me more about what school boards can do to improve attendance levels among kids living with low parental support for attendance? Because that sounds like it would be a really difficult challenge to solve.
Through the chair. So yes, this is a difficult issue. And I would say that chronic absenteeism is not a problem that schools can resolve on their own. And I think I shared that in the end of the, one of my other answers. So within that, so when we see students missing 20% of their time and students who are missing are potentially 60%, it's also important to acknowledge that there are, may be a perceived lack of parental involvement, but that does not necessarily indicate a lack of care on the parent's part. And so for most parents and guardians, this may be an indicator that they need, they're in need of adequate tools or skills and access to support that would assist them and their child to work towards an attendance improvement. So this is where quite often we provide extra, like say, human capital resources. So maybe a school-family liaison or another individual. And we have a few of those individuals in the board to support that work. Or we try to make connections or opportunities for that family to work with other outside agencies. And sometimes maybe there's helping support the family to interact with their family physician. And that can provide them with support. So these various supports would work with the parents through a relational approach, inform parents about importance of regular attendance, discussing ways to mitigate underlying barriers, exploring connecting parents with internal and external supports. And of course, always maintaining ongoing strong communication between the family and the school. And one of the things that we really, really need to do is that when that student comes, that we make sure that we make them feel welcome. Maybe 30 years ago, sometimes a student showed up and we said, where have you been? Now it's really important and we know that it's important to say, I'm really glad that you're here.
Trustee Vukadinovich.
Yeah, that's great to hear. It sounds very supportive. Yeah, and as I'm listening to this too, I'm thinking like just something for our board of trustees to mull over is maybe at some future point, the board would be interested in asking for results to be broken out by attendance, attendance levels. That would be an interesting thing to see both academic achievement, high school graduation rates, that sort of thing, based on attendance levels. But that would be a board discussion for future day. I'm also wondering what school boards, what our school board can do to tackle the challenge of attendance, chronic absenteeism amongst students? Where, because I heard you mention earlier about peer influences sometimes being a factor. So that also sounds like an incredibly complex challenge to address. What are some of the tools that our school board can turn to when it's, when one of them, many overlapping factors is peer influence?
So through the chair. So whether it's absenteeism or it's a student that is struggling in their learning, there is an aspect within all our schools around the individual programming and personalization of learning. So if there's peer conflicts and the school knows about those peer conflicts, then the school will work with the families, if it's multiple students or that family. And an example would be maybe there's an opportunity where we use our school-based mental health supports. Or again, depending on the age and the division level, the supports will probably look different based on the developmental appropriateness of that type of support. So there are many tools and skills within our administrators' toolkits as long as with our teachers. And of course, it would be along a spectrum and the spectrum may be determined also by the age of the students. But if it's based on student conflict, my experience as a school administrator, then you kind of dig in and you work with those families and those students to create a safe, caring, respectful environment. And I think most times we are successful, but yes, we still also have cases and sometimes still high absenteeism.
Trustee Vukadinovich.
Thank you. Continuing along this line of high absenteeism, I wanted to shift to kind of a different population now of kids with absenteeism. And maybe not necessarily chronic absenteeism, but still if my question concerns absenteeism. So I'm concerned about the absenteeism of students with dysregulated behavior. And I imagine a lot of them do have supportive, well-informed parents who are invested in academic results and who already understand the importance of regular attendance. academic results and who already understand the importance of regular attendance. I'm, here I'm thinking of kids who actually have come to class. They've, they're there, they've shown up, their parents have made sure they're there, but now they're being sent home due to dysregulated behavior. So how do we track instances of students with dysregulated behavior being sent home as, as a system? And what measures do we have in place to be able to meet the needs of students with dysregulated behavior at school?
Thank you. Through the Chair. All schools have to respond to student with challenging behavior, difficulty engaging or regulating in a school environment. And that's done through the lens of what creating a welcoming, caring, respectful, safe learning environment. And so schools, when they're responding to students who are having difficulty remaining in school or having difficulty remaining engaged, they're considering individual circumstances, including the age and maturity, social, emotional, and developmental needs of the child. They're considering their learning needs. They're considering the nature and extent, action of incidents or situations, or the cause that are contributing to this challenge. And they're thinking about all of the continuum of supports and services that might be available in order to ensure that the student has their learning, their social, emotional, their physical needs met while they're in school. This is done in partnership through the school staff, with the family, and considering school learning teams around how additional supports and services may need to be put into place. Tracking tools that we use in schools include student support plans, IPPs, and other kinds of student learning team structures, including collaborative response, that would allow us to continue to gather information about the student's attendance, engagement, and the underlying causes that are causing them some challenge within the school environment. Thank you.
Trustee Hack.
Thank you. I'm going to shift a little bit here. So just looking, I'm trying to look at the broad picture of self-identified Indigenous student progress. I'm pleased to see that self-identified Indigenous students performing well on diploma exams. This is fabulous. I see that the transition planning from grade nine to grade 10 seems to be effective. And I say this because I'm seeing consistent numbers of self-identified Indigenous students at CBE across the divisions. However, graduation rates while improved over the last four years do remain low. Compared to Alberta averages, other districts graduate a higher percent within three years than we do still in five. I'm just wondering where we're losing these students? Are they attending grade 12 but not graduating? Are they dropping out before grade, sorry, are they dropping out before grade 12? The transition planning seems to be working. I'm just wondering how we're getting them to graduate.
Thank you.
Through the Chair. One thing I wanted to just highlight is when we think about the intentional work around transition planning from grade nine to grade 10, that has been a focus really for, systemically, it's been individual school focuses, but as a system for a limited period of time. And so where we have seen greater success around those transitions is not yet shown in these graduation rates. So I think that is one important element, that when we apply an understanding of our strategies as a system, that where we will see the results of those, we have a leg that is only specific to high school completion and, and that particular data. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Turner. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the Chair. And so when we look at five-year high school completion for the 2023 year, and then look back at the four and three-year completion rates in 2022 and 2021, we see the completion rates at that time are actually similar to the province. And when comparing your three, four, and five-year completion rates, it's important to note that these are three very different cohort groups, which are determined by their grade 10 year in different school years. And so very difficult and with caution to look to compare a five-year provincial rate to the local three-year rate. We really are looking at year-over-year incremental improvement, CBE student to CBE student within those cohort groups. Well, now you are asking a very important question about what happens and are we losing those students? Students can complete high school in a number of different ways. And this is something that we, we spend a lot of time looking at individual levels of school completion. They can complete, as Superintendent Nelson said in an earlier reply, with a high school diploma, with a certificate of high school achievement, with a high school diploma, a certificate of completion or a certificate of equivalency. And so we're monitoring individual students closely to understand what factors might contribute to them leaving school without a completion of any one of those kinds of completion, a diploma, a certificate, or an equivalency. So for example, what we understand is that in our three-year high school completion rate in the 2023, 2024 year, 401 Indigenous students graduated with a high school diploma. 174 of them graduated with a high school diploma, my apologies. 13 of them earned a certificate of achievement and two were another non-credentialed completion. So there's a variety of ways in which those students are completing. We also know that those who did not complete, there's a variety of different stories for them as well. And so of 165 of them who didn't complete during those three years, they remain in school and they're working towards their year four and year, or perhaps year five high school completion. And so we would anticipate seeing those 165 students complete in a four-year or a five-year window. Out of those, we have identified, out of the original 401 group, we've identified 47 students who we would be considering have left the system. They have not completed or there is no evidence that they are on track to complete within a four or a five-year window. And these individuals may have left the province of Alberta. It doesn't mean that they're not on track to complete. It's just that they are not within a public system within Alberta for us to capture and understand their data. They may also represent individuals. We know that high schools, some high school students have, have passed away. And so either out of province or deceased students, those are the categories that would fall perhaps for the 47 students who have not engaged continuing. Out of those individuals, out of the 47 who are left, half of those students are in grade 12. We'd anticipate them graduating in the coming year in one of the ways that you can complete school in Alberta. And the other half are in grade 11. And so we would anticipate seeing their results in the five-year completion. And finally, I'll make a final comment about, you are absolutely accurate that, as Chief Pittman has said, it is only a recent initiative that we are looking at system-wide holistic transition planning for our self-identified Indigenous students. And so we are starting to see significant results. And I can provide you an example. In this previous June, we had 439 students identified and registered within CBE. And over the course of the summer and through the fall, 416 of those students remain engaged with CBE and on track within their grade 10 programming. We'll continue to use that tool and that structure across multiple grade levels. And in time, with consistent and persistent implementation across our system, we will anticipate seeing improvements across achievement, well-being, and school completion. Thank you.
Trustee May.
Thank you. For indicator three, on the graphs, there's ELA 9 and Math 9 KNE. Can you please explain what this KNE cohort is, who it includes, and what kind of system supports we have for these learners?
Sorry, through the Chair. So KNE courses, specifically you asked around the ELA, grade 9 KNE, and the Math 9 KNE, correct?
Yes, it's just I internally know what KNE is, but I couldn't find any descriptive anywhere in the results. So I'm just kind of curious what the cohort is, kind of what kind of learner that is.
So first of all, the KNE courses are individual courses and not a specific program. This is a change probably almost a decade ago. Students register for the KNE course when appropriate for their learning journey. And I'll, I'll give you actually a few more specific details. So in terms of the graph in the report, the KNE cohort includes all students who enrolled in that KNE course. So for example, in the ELA, grade 9 KNE, there were 70 students who were enrolled. And this also goes back to our speaking notes earlier. 54 of those students wrote the exam. So 16 of the students didn't write the exam. And so remember, they would have been counted as zero. 11 of the students were Indigenous and 15 of the students were EAL. And 70% of this cohort have a special education code. So that's in regards to the ELA. And in the math, we actually saw 87 students who were enrolled. 68 of them wrote the exam. 16, 68 wrote the exam. 16 of the students were Indigenous. 16 were English as an additional language learners. And 70%, same as the other cohort, had a special education code. So quite often you see students that, I'd say there's three main groups of students that I quite often, in my experience, saw taking KNE courses. Could be students that were in a special education class and they were trying to work towards their certificate. It could have been a student that was having struggle with learning and they're using actually as a scaffolding tool. So they're going to take the KNE course and then move towards their diploma. Or a student that had a significant special learning and they really wanted a hands-on learning opportunity. I'll kind of give you, back to your last part of, you know, who are the students that may be taking KNE courses? And they want that functional course to move maybe into trades or into a work experience.
Follow-up. Follow-up, Trustee May.
Thank you. I think in my mind, I thought this number would be higher. Is it, is it typical to, like, I feel like 87 students across the system is, is lower than I thought it would be? Is it just because, like, I know you said, like, they're doing it for a specific reason? Do those numbers increase across time typically? Or is, is grade 9 a good snapshot of what we offer?
So I'll give two pieces. So yes, the numbers do quite often increase as we move to high school. But the second one is, as I shared, that some students may use KNE to create a scaffold to move to other, what would say is a more academic stream. However, because KNE does change your route to high school graduation, you can imagine that middle school learners and families may be more reluctant to take that KNE course. And so my historical understanding is that numbers are lower. I believe that when we were looking this up, that of the 87 students in Math KNE, a year prior, we were 110. But I would say somewhere between, I'm going to give a large range, 125 to 65 students may take a KNE course each year over the last several years.
I have trustee Vukadovitch, followed by trustee Dennis.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to my question around students with dysregulated behavior. I just had a follow-up question for Superintendent Turner. So I asked about what, what can we offer to students who are having, who are experiencing dysregulated behavior so they don't like have to be sent home? Because very often right now, not, I shouldn't say very often, we, we sometimes do see that now, that students are sent home. And the answer you gave, if I heard it correctly, sounded more sort of like, like a systemic, like, here's, here's what we do in general for those students, like the IPP, like their plans. But when there's a specific episode, like an actual, like even with the best aid plans and, and strategies that we have, we have amazing strategies in place to even help students with regulation. I'm aware of that, like, you know, we've got tennis balls on chairs to, to do science, have more silence in rooms. We, you know, have dimmed lights, we're appropriate exercise equipment in hallways. I've seen all, I've seen all this stuff in our schools. But even with, with the best IPP and the best plans, sometimes students have an episode where they're experiencing quite dysregulated, dysregulated behavior, where they can no longer remain in the classroom with other students and have to be removed. So in an episode like that, what options do we have at our disposal in our schools? Examples of options that we have at our disposal in cases where we don't have to call? Because I know there are cases where we do have to call parents to pick up kids, but in those, in those instances where we don't have to call parents to pick up their dysregulated child or parents or guardians, then what, what was it in place at that school that enabled us to keep the child, help to bring their, help them regulate their behavior in the school and then continue, continue with their learning day at the school?
Through the Chair. I'm, I'm going to start and recognizing that we're speaking about our results. And I acknowledge that in the context of this report, we do talk about absenteeism. And so certainly happy to explore, and I think we've got other results reporting that would allow for other discussions related to this. As it relates to students with special education needs who are coded, you see the results there. And so if there's a question specific to our special education results in that cohort, happy to engage. When we look at the responses of schools, where there is a need for support linked to a student who may be regularly or at times dysregulated, where they may need to either go home for a period of the day or miss a component of the classroom to attain that regulation, there are clear processes and monitoring. And from a board governance perspective, we very much look at in a system perspective, monitoring where we have attendance plans in place that relate to that programming, which connect to IPPs, and ensure that a school where that is, where a student may need that support and a family is engaged, that the school learning team, as well as the area learning team, are important elements. And so certainly this is an area that we're happy to discuss further around the nature of supports for students. I think within the context of our results reporting and where we see our results, the identification of absenteeism was really presented at a broad system level and not intended to disaggregate every reason that a student may in fact be absent. And that we're confident that the absent, the team that we have working with schools is in alignment with Alberta education requirements as well as making a difference. And so you do monitor absenteeism through OE2. And so that is another conversation there that, that happy to engage further when, when we're on that piece.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis.
Thank you, Chair. So a comment that Superintendent Nelson made a couple of answers ago, I guess, reminded me of one of my, so curiosities, I guess. It has been a practice over time that CBE does report or includes in our results reporting students who would receive a zero, you know, on a, on a PAT for, you know, if they were excused or absent for the exam. And we've always included, to my understanding, I guess, for as long as I've been a trustee, we've always included that, you know, those results in our overall results. And so just a bit of a curiosity of mine, I guess, in terms of, you know, are we aware what other school divisions might do? Is this a standard practice from the province as well? And really curious, I guess, around, you know, what our results might look like if we, if we didn't do that. Again, sort of that context of what I'm seeing, of the numbers that I'm seeing, you know, would it make much of a difference, I guess, if we were to, you know, do both? I guess, report with, with the zeros included or without? And would it, would it make a significant difference in terms of how our results are reported to the trustees and to the public?
I'll start. And if the chief wants to add, go for it. Through the Chair. So yes, this is a common practice to report our results based on total student enrollment, specifically around PATs, instead of only reporting the results, summarizing the data of those that wrote. And it is important for CBE to report on the results in order to make a fair and equitable comparison between different school divisions and the province. So your question of, we're consistent with the other school jurisdictions and our CBE results are this way comparable to the provincial results. So I think that's the first part. And so what is the value? So the, the first value in it is, it makes it easier to compare. In regards to the second part of your question, we do also look at the results as it relates to the students that wrote. And our schools receive both data sets. So as a high school assistant principal, when I do this, or when I was a Kedonine principal and I was looking at grade six and nine, I would look at those results. So I'll give you a concrete example, trustee Dennis. So at this Kedonine school that I was the principal of, we had an access class. And as many of you have been in an access class, these are students that would have a significant cognitive disability. And so And so in a school that only had sixty-five grade nine students, one year, we had a large cohort of access students of six or seven students. And so in that case, they would make up five to 10% of students and they were rightfully so excused. Whereas the rest of the student population, I think we probably had ninety-five to a hundred percent right. And in that school, I was very fortunate, the students did very well, had acceptable and excellence. But if you looked at the overall results, you might not have seen the exceptional level of achievement. So yes, it, it does impact it. However, it is the, the best way to compare across our provincial results.
Thank you. Trustee Close.
This is so much fun. On page four-twenty, when you're talking about building capacity for high school completion, I have a comment and I'm going to try and sneak in a question of curiosity that has nothing to do with progress of student results. But I'm going to do it anyway. So the language department offers course challenges for grade twelve students and the primary purpose of the CBE language course challenge is to assist students in meeting all requirements for high school graduation. This is so stellar because it's based on a positive asset base. You know, we have students coming to our system, they're already conversant, I don't even know what the language, like, like the term would be in, in a language. And so you want to honor that and help the high school completion. And so truly excited about that and, and building capacity. We've also had a past practice within our system of French immersion students that choose not to continue after grade nine, to be able to challenge French language thirty without having to take the course. And I understand that there is a, is a new process right now that where they, they would have the ability to be exempt from taking French ten and French twenty, and they could take French thirty and then be able to do that. But I'm just wondering, can you comment on why that change? And is it a financial change or, but just comment on the change in practice? Because I think there are certain students and families within our system that are concerned that, that their, their work and time throughout the K to nine experience of French immersion is not being honored in the same way.
So through the chair, trustee Close, I think there's three parts to your question. One, it's that overall strategy of course challenges in regards to language, the ultimate purpose of that, and then also about students that may quite often have been Spanish, Mandarin, or French. So for two years, we did provide thirty-level language course challenges for students in grades ten to twelve in a multiple different languages. Given that Alberta education does not provide specific funding for course challenging programs, and in the effort to use our valuable resources most effectively, we moved to offering the thirty-level language course challenges to grade twelve students only. So I want to specify, this would be for such languages as Arabic, Filipino, French, Cantonese, Italian, Mandarin, Punjabi, Spanish, and Ukrainian. And a student can challenge that and that quite often helps that student that is potentially a new immigrant, that they could get up to fifteen credits. Now, in the second part of your question, students, we have situations where a student may have completed grade one to nine French, or late French immersion, seven to nine, or Mandarin, or Spanish in grades one to nine. And in that case, the student, quite often, if the school offers the courses, and almost all of our high schools offer Spanish and French, could enroll in French thirty in their grade ten year. And from a pedagogical perspective, this is actually an advantage in that they still get feedback, they still get teaching and learning. And upon completion of that thirty-level course, they would get the retroactive of the ten credits for ten and twenty. And so we still are supporting those students to get those credits, but also to give them a foundational learning piece. So there are multiple pieces to this. You kind of highlighted, there isn't actual funding to the system for all those retroactive credits, but we are working on this to, A, support students to get to high school completion. We did make this a bit more targeted, but there is still a way for those students that have been supported in language programs in our schools to still get those thirty-level credits. It may not have all be the same ways we did it for two school years. I hope that answers it.
Trustee Bukidinovich?
I hadn't heard before about this, to follow up on Nancy's piece. I hadn't heard before about this piece that if students were to enroll in French, Mandarin, Spanish, or German thirty in grade ten, that they could then do that diploma in grade ten rather than twelve. So I'm wondering, what are we doing to communicate to grade nine students that this is, like, if you're interested in challenging the, the language exam, the thirty-level language exam in grade ten, a good route for you to do that would be to enroll in the thirty-level course in grade ten is one of your options. And, and, and then also, as you, as you said, there's even the case to be made that there's, there, there's good learning that happens by actually taking the course and preparing for that exam through, through a course. So what are we doing to, to communicate, to communicate that to grade nine parents? Because I'm a grade nine parent, I hadn't heard this. And I hadn't heard this from any of the many high school parents who had contacted me concerned about this issue.
Through the chair, and I probably should look at Christos, who's in the audience, who has lots of experience with languages. My understanding, when I was a high school assistant principal in 2010 to 2012, so fourteen, fifteen years ago, if we had students that came out of a language program, we would, when we have the space and resources, try to provide them the opportunity that they could do that thirty-level course early. So of course you would give the grade twelve students the priority, but if you have a French thirty class that has, you know, twenty-five to twenty-eight, thirty students, we know lots of our classes are bigger, that the grade ten student can enter that class and get those retroactive credits. They have to, of course, fit it into their timetable, but it is very much doable in many schools. I don't want to create a situation that all the schools think that they have to do it, they have to manage their resources. In regards to communication, it's usually an ongoing communication, but I will talk to the director of languages to see how we are communicating that out. I do know that the piece around students being able to enter in grade ten, eleven, twelve, if they've taken the grade one to nine, has something, has been shared, but I don't know the full details. I hope that helps.
Thank you for that information on the thirty language courses, because I had a few questions which were answered in there. And it is fascinating to me, the longer I've been here, the number of different ways you can complete high school credits, including, of course, languages if you're non-English or have another language at home. But this is related or not, but to credits, is on page twenty of one thirty-five. Can you share more about the partnership with the Calgary Construction Association and the piloting of the Honor the Work program?
Through the chair. So Honor the Work, they also say Advancing STEAM Education Pilot Program for the 2024 school year is running as a pilot, as you shared, in three CBE schools. And the mission of this program is to connect Canadians to meaningful careers in the skilled trades and seek to inspire a new generation of value craftsmanship and honor the work. So students in grades one through six will engage in multidisciplinary and multisensory STEAMs. So this is science, technology, engineering, art, mathematics, and skills. And there's kits provided to the school. And they are directly related to trades such as manufacturing, industrial, architecture, engineering, and construction sectors. And then with the support, the teachers, there's materials, there's student handouts, there's a diverse, this is really cool, I thought, children's books that illustrate the innovation and skills developed when pursuing skilled trades. And every lesson is connected to the outcomes in Alberta education curriculum. And so we have this in three schools. Just like any pilot, we'll look at, we'll review it and see what the success and try to continue on that partnership. If it's successful, and my understanding, working with the director, is that we're working on more of a formal agreement and partnership with this group. So thank you for your question.
Thank you very much. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much, Chair. I think my final question for this morning on this report. Report card results form an important part of the data set that trustees examine when we're, you know, considering reasonable progress of our students. And so there's a statement that was made really early in the report, is in, under the executive summary, bottom of page two, where it says, "Trust and validity in any body of evidence are strengthened by the consistency with which the evidence tells the same story." And so it goes on to talk about, you know, information contained in report cards. And so I would agree entirely with that, with that statement. That's really important. Just wondering, in that context, how have we, or how do we continue to build consistency across the organization in terms of how and what evidence is collected in determining student, student achievement? And specifically in that statement, it mentions observations, conversations, and student work.
Through the chair, one of the elements, and trustee Dennis, I think earlier you asked about context. And new curriculum is always an opportunity and a requirement for continued review of the application of how it is teachers understand the level of achievement linked to new curriculum. And obviously, across K to six, this has been a priority. It remains an area of focus in our middle schools, as that also drives the manner in which we assess where additional supports are needed, and is a critical element to continuing to assess reasonable progress and the rate of progress of students. So with that, I'll turn it over to superintendent Nelson to share the concrete examples of how and which we're doing this.
So as you're very much, sorry, through the chair, as you're very much aware, Chief Pittman, in her previous role, worked with core curriculum to create frameworks and a guiding document around assessment. So I'd say that was our first major step in creating that level of consistency. So within that, we have professional learning, where teachers engage in ongoing professional learning to deepen their understanding of triangulation, the evidence, as you shared in your question, which includes observations, conversations, and student product. And we have created common language across our teachers, whether that's through looking at OBA or K to nine assessment, the guiding documents as I just shared. We have the same technology platform with Power School across our organization that supports that continuity. We have supported teachers and bring them together to look at their own professional judgment around conversations. And we do have key structures right at the school level, such as professional learning communities. And this is where teachers bring student work and student task to create cohesion across this school and then across the entire organization around instruction and assessment. So I think that's how we're continuing to provide that. And those guides, like frameworks are enduring, but they do get small tweaks. And the guides also are updated each year. But it is about tweaking it, because what we don't want to do to our teachers is saying, hey, now we're completely going in this different direction.
Follow-up?
Really quickly, not a question word, just a comment. So thank you so much for that. And I really appreciate the work that has happened, you know, over the last, you know, handful of years in terms of creating some of that consistency and just that ongoing work. I know when trustees are looking at this report, we're looking at, you know, larger, you know, big groups of students, whereas I know as administration system leaders and as principals, they have the opportunity to look at their individual schools and really, you know, drill down into terms of, you know, how students need to be supported to be successful. So just appreciation for that ongoing work and how important it is. Thank you.
Trustees, do we have any additional questions on our two indicators, one, two, and three? Okay, thank you. Well, we will move on then. Next, under operational expectations, our agenda is the annual monitoring of Operational Expectations Eight: Communicating, Engaging With the Public. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Boulder and trustees, today we present the monitoring report for Operational Expectation Eight. And the data collected for this monitoring report applies to the 2023-24 school year. The report provides evidence of the work by staff across schools and service units to foster relationship with community. I'm happy to report that we are compliant with all fourteen indicators. Trustees have heard me say before, we are an inherently human organization. Building strong connections with students, staff, families, and the broader community is important for the students we serve today and those into the future. Communication and engagement are just one of the building blocks to building community and supporting student success. And this report highlights the multiple opportunities for community to engage in conversations on topics, initiatives, and activities that affect them. Chief Communications Officer Marla Martin Esposito will take you through the report and highlight some of the key activities from the previous school year.
Chair Boulder and trustees, this OE eight monitoring report highlights some of the ways we as a system communicate and engage with our communities. And our communities include families, students, staff, partners, and members of the public. Sharing information, offering opportunities for feedback and two-way dialogue is not something that just one service unit or school provides. As Chief Pittman mentioned, we are all responsible for strengthening connections and creating a greater sense of community. Employees across schools and service units, and you as trustees, communicate and engage on a wide range of topics each day. And as a system, we strive to provide timely and responsive communications and to involve people in decisions that affect them. And to help us communicate and engage effectively, we use a variety of platforms and tools, websites, our parent communication platform, social media, just to name a few. Our online engagement tool helps make it easier to gather feedback from families, staff, and students on a variety of topics. And it's also important for communities to have an opportunity to ask questions or to provide a comment as needed, and our websites have contact information included and responses are provided on a timely basis. In this annual monitoring report, a number of indicators speak to opportunities for gathering feedback on specific school or system decisions, including school development plans, school budgets, and fees, known as school planning engagement. Additional opportunities for staff to provide feedback are highlighted in the last indicator in this report. As you're aware, last year, we conducted a comprehensive engagement to help inform the development of the CBE's two thousand and, this upcoming engagement plan. And in previous years, we, we conducted short surveys or gathered feedback through a variety of internal or external sources, but this was the first time we developed a structured, large-scale system engagement. And we offered multiple opportunities for the CB community to provide input, and an addition of variety of communications materials were developed to ensure participants were well-informed and could meaningfully contribute. And more than nine thousand CB community members did participate, and that feedback helped ensure that the education plan is not only strategic and comprehensive, but also reflective of the diverse voices within our community. And this engagement also provided the opportunity to strengthen relationships between students, staff, families, and community partners. You'll also note in this report, the ongoing communications to keep school councils informed, as well as responding to concerns and complaints. So at this time, we'd be happy to respond to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. The Operational Expectations policies define, define the degree of authority transferred to the chief superintendent as she makes day-to-day decisions. The Board of Trustees has previously reviewed the reasonable interpretation of this Operational Expectation and approved that the chief superintendent reasonably understands the values underlying this policy, and that the indicators previously provided by the chief superintendent are acceptable to the board. I now invite any trustee who has questions about the report to offer them to the chief superintendent. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy the board that its policy values were complied with during the 2023-24 school year. I encourage trustees to limit the questions and comments in support of monitoring. Trustee Close.
Thank you. For indicator eight point two point three on page nine of nineteen, or page five dash nine, references made to the, to five
schools being without school councils. And I personally know of two for regular program schools that did not have school councils during that year. So how do, my question is, how do we support school principals with recruitment? Because I know, once a school council is established, they have a wealth of resources that they can access. But how are principals supported with how best to work with school councils?
Through the chair. Thank you. And so we are also aware of five schools at the time of this report that did not have a school council. Those five schools are unique settings that include Woods Home, Dr. Gordon Townsend, Westview, William Roper Hall, and a final site was Louise Dean. And we do know that in, across these sites, there’s a variety of ways, although they may not have a formalized school council, there are ways in which the principal, alongside working with their education director, engage parent community or other individuals that are supporting the students around that family, to be able to engage, to provide advice, comment, feedback, and engage in a variety of different ways within that school setting. And so principals are supported through resources and materials that are found on our website around working with your school council. They are supported in terms of professional learning activities that we provide to them around the role of principal. And they also support this relationship and development with their parent community through building a safe and caring and welcoming environment that invites families in to be able to feel comfortable to share their thoughts and their opinions, both through formal ways and informal ways of participating in conversation in the school hallways. I see many principals talking with families and parents as buses and cars are dropping children off for school, at events and activities, they are engaging. And all of that work is contributing to creating an open environment where parents are feeling comfortable to come in to share their thoughts and opinions. Thank you.
Trustee Close?
Thank you. And I probably should correct myself. There was probably school councils existing but not fully populated for the regular programs. Under indicator 8.3, page 11/19, or 511, Concerns and Complaints, can you comment on the trends, areas of concerns that have been shared with CBE? And I just recall at the, at the recent COSK meeting, our chief superintendent actually referenced, you know, that we’re solution-oriented. You know, it sounds so negative, concerns and complaints. So I’m just wondering if we’re thinking of, of changing the title. And I’ve also heard that at a school council meeting, where one of the area principals was, was described his role as more solution-focused. So just comments on the trends and, and if we’re changing the name?
Through the chair, I’ll start with the question around name change and then pass it over to the team. I think there’s always a conversation to be had, and certainly that’s why an administration is open to and would take under advisement, recognizing that there are many reasons why people feel concerned about entering a concern on a concern and complaint form. But that fundamentally, our intent is to find solutions, and that it is not unreasonable to expect that sometimes those solutions are not always an immediate found at the top, but actually closest to. And in other cases, it is found through a different process. And those are, both can be true and are important for our organization to be healthy.
Through the chair, in regard to the themes, there are five major themes: parents inquiring about educational programming, school operations, staff concerns, concerns with other students, and the last one would be, kind of grouped it, but either transfers or out-of-area attendance, which would make a lot of sense, as our schools have less ability, specifically our high schools, to take transfers. And most, I do want to add, the most often, these are all handled at the school level, area level.
Trustee Hack?
Happy to see so many engagements happening. I have a question, I guess, 8.4.1, page 1419. Approximately 6,000 participated in school planning engagement surveys. I’m just wondering, compared to previous years, are those percentages or totals? And I know our total number of students has gone up, so are those numbers trending up or down? Thank you.
Through the chair. This participation response is lower than previous years. Last year, we had 7,074 responses on the school planning engagement survey. And, you know, we can’t confidently sort of draw conclusions as to why it was lower year over year. But when we consider that the education plan engagement happened sort of the month prior to the school planning engagement taking place, that may have resulted in fewer participating last year. You know, even though there were two separate engagements, you know, one focused more on a system level and one at the school, parents may have felt that their responses on, on one were reflective of their school experience and didn’t, didn’t engage on the school planning engagement. When we look back a few years, for 2021-22, it was around 6,500 responses. And so, you know, you can see we’re sort of fluctuating in and around the 6,000 to 7,000. You know, we know families are busy. We do communicate these opportunities through a variety of ways in advance and, and provide both opportunities for in-person and, and through a survey, so that people have various options to participate.
Thank you. We’re just going to take a quick two-minute recess. All right, I’ll call us back to order. Are there any additional questions for OE VIII? Trustee Hack?
I’m just going to continue, I guess, 8.4.2. Looking, I’m just wondering if there were any other post-engagement evaluations conducted in the last school year? I know the education plan engagements are not done annually. I’m sure very thankful for that. But wondering if you can provide examples of past post-engagement evaluations if no other ones were done last year?
Through the chair. Yeah, so when community engagements take place, that system-led engagements, we do do a session evaluation at the end of the in-person sessions. And then we, we make those results of the evaluations public on our website in the, the community engagement section of the website. And we recommend that practice to other service units or schools that are, are conducting an engagement. And you’re correct, the education plan engagement was the only system-led engagement that, that we led as Communication Engagement Services that was concluded in the year. And so that’s the only one. But if you go to the website and you sort of go back in time, the calendar engagement was one where we did a post-evaluation, and, and the survey results, or a summary is available on the website.
Trustee Hack?
Thank you so much for that. A couple more down, so page 16 of 19, 8.4.4. It says, “Principals confirm staff involvement in school decisions as required by collective agreements.” I’m just wondering what opportunities do staff have to provide input at the school level that is directly communicated to the principal? And additionally, how is this communicated to the principal? Is it through surveys? Is it through direct input, one-on-one meetings, or any other methods? Thank you.
Through the chair. So yes, you are correct. Staff do often provide feedback through several methods, and there are ones that you just kind of highlighted. So it could be small group discussion, could be one-on-one opportunities like fireside chats, hopefully without the fires, surveys which may be anonymous, or that do identify the staff. And, and principals can always reach out to community engagement team for support or advice. And we do also have tools within Insight and on our corporate website as well.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I appreciate answering the second part. The first part is, what would they be asked on? Any examples, please?
Yes, so there’s an expectation that there’s an engagement specifically with the staff and your teachers around how non-instructional days will be used. As a principal, personal experience, I would actually ask questions about how we were using our resources within our school, and how the staff might want to also position certain activities and days throughout the year. So it could be aspects around instruction, professional learning, about how we’re going to organize our students. It could be gathering feedback around system initiatives at the school level, and then the principal is actually bringing that back to the area and to the education directors, which is then coming to school improvement, to the superintendents level, and then informing all superintendents in the work that we do. So we do try to create kind of a flow that we can share information all the way to the teacher level, and the teacher can also be sharing information all the way at the superintendent level. You know, we are a big system, but I always share that quite often we’re a small family.
Trustee Bukidinovich?
Yeah, I like that, big system, small family. That’s definitely captures it quite well. Not a question, but just a comment that I feel that this report reflects sort of the experience that I’ve had with, with CBE over the past four years as a trustee and three and a half, and, and what I’m hearing from parents as well, that, and I’m particularly seeing, seeing how we communicate with the, communicate and engage with, with parents and the public when it comes to issues that are challenging, or that where it’s not quite what, what parents wanted to see. And I’m, I’m hearing feedback that parents and guardians see that we have caring staff, that we have smart people working for the CBE. And I hear a lot of feedback where people say that, that they were impressed that either CBE was able to, you know, move that big bus when, when that can happen and, and make a change in response to feedback, or that CBE, it was able to clearly communicate a rationale that parents could understand when, when something is happening that just has to happen, because it’s the, the thing that just makes most sense. So, so I just wanted to say to our chief superintendent that I’m very impressed. Thank you.
We now come to the point where trustees are asked to identify their intentions to bring forward any motions related to compliance with this Operational Expectation. Any trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding exception, defining the evidence to be compliant, or a motion of commendation for exceptional performance in a particular area, should provide the Corporate Secretary and all trustees with the proposed motion, motions by noon Thursday, January 23rd, 2025. If there are no exceptions or commendations, then this item will be placed on the consent agenda for the January 28th, 2025 board meeting, with the motion that the Board of Trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with provisions of OE VIII: Communicating and Engaging with the Public. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, Chief Superintendent’s Update. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Boulder, Boulder and trustees, the chief superintendent update for this month celebrates work that is directly linked to OE II, the Learning Environment Treatment of Students, OE VIII: Communicating with and Engaging the Public, and OE VI: Facilities. I want to highlight the important work being done to advance student agency in impacting student well-being in each of their schools, as reflected what’s shared before you around our High School Well-being Symposium. Having an opportunity to be directly part and in attendance and welcome trustee attendance there as well, where we observed the School Improvement Central Team, along with all of our high school student services teams and various other teachers and admin, doing credible work and concrete, specific planning to have direct impact and build stronger communities and well-being for individual students across each of our high schools. You will be, spoiler alert, be seeing another one linked to our middle school group, and that one is even larger than this one. The additional work highlighted and also led by our Indigenous education team reflects the full continuum of work linked to cultural teachings, practical opportunities for our students to engage in their education pathways, and also within their career planning. And there are many elements reflected and communicated across the system in support of things that we’ve discussed in our Results II report earlier today. Furthermore, I’m very proud of the work and support across the organization to address practical needs like backpacks for our students. And these partnerships are key with our corporations and community partners. The actions and the reflection of the, the volunteerism of our own staff resulted in meeting this important need. And finally, you also see the evidence of the careful work being done to ensure effective and efficient use of our energy utility resources in alignment, again, with what you see in your Operational Expectation VI for facilities and the way in which we manage our resources. At this time, happy to answer any questions you have.
Trustees, questions or comments on the report? Trustee Close?
I just, I just have a comment. I really appreciate the opening remarks, but also very much appreciate the, the, the update tied to, to our Operational Expectations. It’s always got a wealth of information and, and something that where trustees can easily share information with their communities. I do want to make a comment, was able to attend the, the high school student well-being, and in addition to, you know, students obviously being the heart of that important work, our chief superintendent gave a very powerful, impactful keynote on, on, on just around the, how we, how, how we each have personal agency, and how we can build community, and what actions we can take. And then also, our, our superintendent of school improvement, really impactful conversation around the shared language that we need to use when we talk about mental health and well-being. And so, so it was very practical. When I was able to visit with the tables of the students, it was great to hear them learn the tools and, and along with staff of, of what they can do to make changes in their, in their school. And I look forward to the, the middle, the middle school one. I think, to me, the chief superintendent’s update, and why I’ll probably try to always pull it off consent, even when we have a busy agenda, is it demonstrates the culture of our, our learning organization, and I think we have to share that more often. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Close. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, that brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. All items not removed from the consent agenda will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. This concludes the public portion of today’s agenda. The board has one legal and two strategic planning matters to deal with in private. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for this meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. The meeting is now terminated.